And welcome to the March 6, 2024, meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed in silent mode. Councilor Kuchar, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
It would be a pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilor Kuchar.
Here.
Councilor Craig. Councilor Cruz.
Here.
Councilor Gina Tally. Councilor Fleming.
Here.
Councilor Green.
Here.
Councilor Schultz.
Here.
Councilor Van Hazinga.
Here.
Councilor Walsh.
Here.
President Zarella.
Here.
Councilor Boishman.
Here spiritually.
So we have nine members present.
Thank you very much. Anyone wishing to participate in public comment? We have one person signed up. Ms. Wetchy, you may approach. And we don't need you to identify yourself if you don't want to, but it's just identify the agenda item on which you wish to speak, and you will have two minutes.
CDBG, year 50. This grant of almost $1 million could go to pave our roads. We know this because paving is listed as Item H. If we citizens face a serious infrastructure issue with our homes like a roof caving in, we prioritize it. We don't put up fancy signs. We don't pretty up the facade of our houses. We don't buy benches. We don't go buy supplies for arts and crafts. We fix the roof, and to quote Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmer, "You should fix the damn roads." You and the council should reject the allocation of this grant, send it back to community planning and development, and instruct them to work with Commissioner Erickson to find a mile of road in desperate need of paving and pave it. Please use the common sense in running our government that residents use in their own households and fund essentials, not extras. I'm tired of hearing there's no money to pave the roads, then when we get money, it goes to everything else. Imagine if you owed $1,000 in back rent and you got $100. You should put it towards your rent, not say, "Oh, it's not enough to clear up my backlog, so I'm going to spend it on knickknacks." But that's what our political establishment does with the roads. We need a new approach that is responsible.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? All right. We will proceed with our announcements. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, March 7, from 4 until 5:30 p.m. in Room 205 at the Fitchburg State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Excuse me. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate the meeting. Ward 1 Councilor Bernie Schultz is also hosting a Ward 1 community meeting on Monday, March 11, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. here in the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street. City Solicitor Lisa Mead and mayoral chief of staff Alex Vera will make presentations and then answer questions following their presentations. In addition to Fitchburg Ward 1 residents, all other Fitchburg residents are welcome to attend.
Counselor, it's actually 7 o'clock. Is I mistaken?
Ah, thank you. That is at 7 o'clock on the 11th here in the Legislative Chamber. The Fitchburg Health Department is sponsoring a blood drive in partnership with Mass General Hospital on Wednesday, March 20. The MGH Blood Mobile will be parked outside this Legislative Building, again, 700 Main Street, from 9:30 a.m. to 3 o'clock p.m. Parking will be available in the lot behind the Legislative Building and on Main Street. Appointments are required and can be made at bit.ly/fitchburgmgh. The registration link can also be accessed via postings on the Board of Health and City of Fitchburg Facebook pages. Ward 3 Councilor Kuchar will be hosting a Ward 3 meeting at the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street, on March 21 at 6 o'clock to discuss the smell coming from various sources in Ward 3. And that concludes our announcements for the evening. Oh, go right ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. I would like to just announce and thank everybody. We had election here in the city of Fitchburg yesterday, our Super Tuesday. And so I thank everybody that worked, my poll workers, my team, they work about four weeks up to that, the Police Department, Fire Department, DPW, who sets up the polls, the Treasurer Collector's Office, who puts meters on parking, the parking meters. There's a lot of work that goes into, a lot of departments that touch elections, and I just want to thank all of them so much. Some unofficial numbers, just to give you, we've got 28,865 registered voters, for a total of 5,293 participated in Super Tuesday. We had 3,582 that voted in person, and we had 1,711 that participated by vote by mail. So I just, again, I'm afraid I'm going to leave someone off, but I want to thank everybody for their help, support. It's such a critical process, and we just need everybody to take part and be involved. So thank you.
You know who you forgot?
You.
You.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, I would like to thank the little ones in the audience. They kept up with the pledge of allegiance when it was said, and they didn't miss a word. Good job, guys.
Very nice.
Yeah.
And we have the report of the Appointments Committee. Councilor Kuchar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee took up five, well, excuse me, three new appointments, two reappointments. First new appointment was to the Human Rights Commission, Mr. Miles Phillips Wilcox, which was unanimously approved. Another new appointment for the Agricultural Commission, Jill Lucius, which was unanimously approved. New appointment to the Executive Director of the Council on Aging, Amanda Ketch. See, I got that one right? Kek.
I was close.
Nice. All right. And two reappointments, one to the trustee of the Public Burial Ground, Michelle Barzy, and a new reappointment to the, well, a reappointment to the Fitchburg Historical Commission, Charles Stella Mollo, which was all unanimously approved.
Motion to approve the report.
I have a motion and second. As Councilor Boishman is participating remotely, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Kuchar.
Yes.
Councilor Cruz.
Yes.
Councilor Fleming.
Yes.
Councilor Green.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Councilor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Councilor Boishman.
Yes.
That's a full nine members.
All right, it is unanimously approved. And before we go to the Committee on Records, I just realized that at the end of the announcements, I had forgotten to call up the awards ceremony. Who would like to present on this?
Good evening, Mr. President. I'd like to just say a few words. Once again, you're always gracious allowing us to come into your council chambers during session and recognize certain things that happen in the city.
It's our pleasure.
I'm going to turn this over to Lieutenant Howe. We're very fortunate to have a lieutenant heading our Community Engagement Unit and working collaboratively with Councilor Craig in the School Department. We have some very special awards that we'd like to present tonight. But I'd like to turn this over to the lieutenant, who has done the omen's work on this and is intimately involved in it, but I wanted to extend my gratitude to you, Mr. President, for allowing us to come in front of council as always.
Anytime, Chief, and thank you.
Chief, thank you very much. Firstly, I want to say to the kids here and the families, this year, we had 600 entries, which is amazing, to have 600 entries. And what did that 600 entries do? Well, obviously, we talked about dog licenses and the importance to get your dog license, right? So what do you think the reason is to get our dog's license? Well, there's two, three main reasons why. Number one is the law, is that this is being registered because it's law important? Yeah, it's important, but is that the most important thing? No. Number two is to make sure your dog's vaccinated against rabies. Now, rabies is something that humans can catch from animals, so it's important that your dogs have rabies vaccinations, right? But the most important thing, I think, and I'm going to tell you why I think this, because I have a story to tell you in a minute, but the most important thing about having your dog registered is if your dog is lost, the owner can be fine. With that, I'm going to tell you a quick story. So two years ago, I was home, and my mother-in-law called me, Frank. Her elderly dog, that was 17 years old, the dog's named Sissy. I was on the leash, and Sissy broke free from the leash. Now, Sissy could barely walk, okay? But Sissy broke through the leash, and Sissy ran about 20 miles away. Now, we didn't even know the dog could walk that far, because it could barely walk up the stairs. But sure enough, the dog was found in Lunenburg, and my in-laws live in Lancaster, near downtown. It was found near downtown Lunenburg. So that's quite a ways from the dog. But you know how the dog was found? Someone saw it beside the road. They called, the dog had a license on its collar. They called the Lunenburg Town Hall, and the dog was reunited with my mother-in-law, and, you know, tragedy averted, so the dog was found. So by bringing awareness to getting your dog registered, we have 600 of you that participated. Now, 600 people now know to get your dog registered. So when you guys get older, I'm sure you're going to have your dog registered, and if you have friends and family, you're going to say, hey, did you get your dog registered? And that's what's going to happen. So with that, I want to commend each and one of you. Now, the 600 entries, this is how we did it, so I got to thank Clerk's office, Clerk's, actually Sally Craig, who organized this event, with her organization, Paws Sensitive and Trends of Fitchburg Dogs. She did this event, and she's done it multiple years. So she narrowed it down from 600 to 30. And then Clerk's office, which I have to thank her, they sit behind me, their office narrowed it down to 15. And then from there, we're a collaboration, all right? We work together. What do people do when we work together? It went to the police department. So the chief and I, we looked at this final 15 and narrowed it down to yours seven. And I got to tell you, the chief was very proud to be able to do this, because the chief was having, and I'm sure the chief's not going to get mad at me for saying this, the chief was having his first birthday, because he was doing budget, budgetary items, preparing for the city to keep the city safe, so he was involved in that. So we got to take a break and do something fun, and this was fun to watch, and, you know, it showed about the collaboration between the things. But enough of me talking, you guys are waiting for some good stuff up here, right? So we got some help, we wanted to get some awards, so we have seven awards to give out. And it was very hard to pick from, so I'm going to let you take over and go from there. Thank you.
My name is Mrs. Kelly Morrison. I'm the art teacher over at Crocker. And we had some winners from Crocker. Jet Nail Guzman Rivera, he's a second grader, he's not here tonight, so I will be accepting his award. Athena Barnett, our third grader at Crocker.
And these are winners.
And then another honorable mention is Cameron Higginswan. She's a fifth grader. We have two honorable mentions from McKay. Tatiana Giles is a third grader. And Gabriella Garcia, she's a fifth grader, and I'll be accepting her word also. Our winner is from Crocker. He was an honorable mention in last year. He, his name is Angel Garcia, and he's a fifth grader at Crocker.
Thank you very much, everybody. If anybody wants to take a picture, I'm sure the council won't mind.
Let's bring all the winners up, and we'll take a picture all together with your jockeys, huh? With your bags, we'll take your jockeys.
And we'll clear, we'll clear the bench, take as many pictures as you want, we'll continue when you're done. Thank you all for being here. All right. Next up, we have the report of the Committee on Records. Councilor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Motion to approve. Thank you very much. Motion to approve. I have a motion and second to approve. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Kuchar.
Yes.
Councilor Cruz.
Yes.
Councilor Fleming.
Yes.
Councilor Green.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Councilor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Councilor Boishman.
Yes.
That's nine members.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. We have some communications from Her Honor, the Mayor. Appointment of Eric Takal as a member of the Fitchburg Airport Commission, term to expire March 19, 2027. Appointment of Paul Hathaway, Fitchburg Airport Commission, term to expire March 19, 2027. Appointment of two full-time police officers for the Police Department, Nathan E. Jorge and Benjamin R. Lima. And one full-time firefighter, Benjamin E. Nealan. Reappointment of Clayton R. Raymond to the Airport Commission, term to expire March 19, 2027. Reappointment of Evan Halsted to the Agricultural Commission, a term to expire April 1, 2027. Reappointment of Colby O'Brien to the Board of Parks Commissioners, term to expire April 1, 2029. And reappointment of David C. Brooks, Board of Parks Commissioners, term to expire April 1, 2029. Those all stand referred to the Appointments Committee. The CDBG year 50 recommendation or grant allocations stand referred to the Finance Committee. We have a communication from the Department of Environmental Protection Waterways Regulation Program, a notice and a, oh, no, that is, and a notice of license application pursuant to MGL Chapter 21 for the Twin Cities Rail Trail Waters of the North Nashua River between 65 and 115 Sawyer Passway in Fitchburg. And I guess I'm going to need to take a vote on whether we can waive the reading. Can I have a motion?
Motion to waive the reading.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion and second to waive the reading. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Kuchar.
Yes.
Councilor Cruz.
Yes.
Councilor Gina, Councilor Fleming.
Yes.
Councilor Green.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Councilor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
That passes by nine members unanimously.
Thank you very much. We also have the annual report of the Money Tech High School for the year 2023. I would ask for a motion to waive the reading. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Kuchar.
Yes.
Councilor Cruz.
Yes.
Councilor Fleming.
Yes.
Councilor Green.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Councilor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
And Councilor Boishman.
Yes.
Thank you. That's nine members, passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the report of the Finance Committee. Councilor Gina Tally is not here, so I will report that out. We had four items on the agenda. 3824 was the expenditure of funds from the Department of Mental Health Police Base Bail Diversion Program in the approximate amount of $59,000 for the purpose of maintaining the Police Department Crisis Intervention Team. That was unanimously recommended for adoption. 3924 expenditure of funds from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Performance Grant in the approximate amount of $20,150 for the purchasing of hazmat suits, a dry suit, swift water foot protection, and gas meter upgrades, unanimously recommended for adoption. 4024 expenditure of grant funds in the amount of $1,407 from the Fitchburg Cultural Council in support of the Parks and Recreation Department Concerts on the Common Music Series, unanimously recommended for adoption. And 4124, the transfer of $69,000 from health sanitary landfill expenses to health rubbish removal expenses to close out our account for trash pickup with waste management. That was recommended for adoption by a vote of four to one with Councilor Gina Tally in dissent. And I have, Councilor Fleming.
I ask that 04124 be polled and voted on separately.
Second.
We don't need a vote on that part, but thank you. Yeah, we can do that. In that case, do I have a motion on 38 through 4024?
Motion to approve 3824 through 4024.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and second to approve and adopt the recommendation of the Finance Committee as to items 3824 through 4024. Anyone on the motion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Kuchar.
Yes.
Councilor Cruz.
Yes.
Councilor Fleming.
Yes.
Councilor Green.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Councilor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
And Councilor Boishman.
Yes.
That's nine members, it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Now, the recommendation of the Committee as to 4124 is before the council.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and second. Anyone on the motion? All right, Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Councilor Kuchar.
No.
Councilor Cruz.
Yes.
Councilor Fleming.
No.
Councilor Green.
No.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Councilor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
And Councilor Boishman.
Yes.
So that passes 63.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the report of the Public Works Committee. Councilor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works met on Tuesday, February 27 to take up a number of items. We wrote it to approve the minutes of the January 30 meeting and got a good update from Commissioner Erickson, which are in the mini-meets for petitions. First three were approved unanimously, beginning with 010-24, Councilor Fleming on behalf of Mary Lutz at 349 Pearl Hill Road to install a berm that has deteriorated over the years. 031-24, Councilor Kuchar on behalf of Charles Piumarini to investigate excessive water on Reed Street.
Counselor Cruz, I think you look at the wrong agenda.
Oh, my goodness, I'm so sorry. Forgive me. Can I have a moment, please? Could I have a brief recess, please, Mr. President?
Yes, I will take us to a two-minute recess, please.
That's what we took out, no?
He's right.
Nope, no. Mr. President, let it be known, it's all right, from the gentleman from Ward 4. And for the record, I had the right agenda for all those watching. Let me find my place again, excuse me. Then we had, did, 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 yes, Councilor Kuchar on behalf of Charles Piumarini to investigate excessive water on Reed Street. That was approved. It was granted. Next up was 032-24, Councilor Kuchar on behalf of Chris Kuchar to remove the brush at Electric and Rollstone Rotary was granted. 256-23, Councilor Kuchar on behalf of Brian Rufian to request a berm to replace from the intersection of Oak Hills to Storm drain just past 394 Franklin Road. That was held upon some further investigation. 255-23 was the final petition, Councilor Fleming on behalf of Dan Sarason at 75 Klondike Ave. That was approved as amended.
Motion to accept the report.
Second. I have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Kuchar.
Yes.
Councilor Cruz.
Yes.
Councilor Fleming.
Yes.
Councilor Green.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Councilor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
And Councilor Boishman.
Yes.
That passes by nine members unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next, we have orders finance. I'm just going to whip through these rather than taking another roll call to waive the reading. I do want to note that 04924, the appropriation of $65,000 from available funds credited $35,000 to Law Labor Council and $30,000 to damages persons and properties, is unrelated to the new law firm. Labor Council and damage awards are both things that are independent of that. 5024, order that being hereby is appropriated the sum of $72,110.97 from reserve for appropriation peg access expenses to support capital needs at FATV, at the FATV broadcast location. 5124, the sum of $39,500,000 being hereby is appropriated to pay the cost of various sewer separation projects, including but not limited to sewer separation project CSO 032, 045, and 083, separation rehabilitation, and that to meet this appropriation, the city treasurer, with approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow all or part of said amount under and pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 7.1 or 8.14, or under 8.14 from the, no, sorry, 7.1 or 8.14 from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Chapter 29(c) or pursuant to any other enabling authority to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore, and to file or execute all necessary documents with the municipal finance oversight board to qualify such bonds under MGL Chapter 44(a), and that the mayor or other relevant city official is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take all, any other action necessary to carry out the project. 05224, order that the city of Fitchburg hereby approves the expenditure of grant funds by the Board of Health from the United Way of North Central Massachusetts in the amount of $2,000, supplement the winter warming center. 05324, order that the city of Fitchburg hereby approves the expenditure of state earmarked funds allocated by the Department of Conservation and Recreation in the amount of $75,000 for the rehabilitation of the youth soccer field area at Coolidge Park. And 05424, order that the city of Fitchburg hereby approves the transfer And zero, fifty-four, twenty-four, order that the city of Fitchburg hereby approves the transfer of $96,349 from CDBG Year 47 Police Department ADA parking improvements to CDBG Year 48 Parks and Playground improvements. Uh, those all, in addition to all orders, uh, under the CDBG allocations, stand referred to Finance. Uh, we have an ordinance, zero, zero, nine, twenty-four. This is the third and final reading. An ordinance amending Article 8 entitled Snow or Ice on Motor Vehicles as outlined in the enclosed ordinance. Uh, Chapter 157-dash-94 shall be amended as outlined in the enclosed ordinance. Chapter 169-dash-10 entitled Violations and Penalties shall be renumbered as 169-11. A new Chapter 169-10 entitled Duty to Remove Snow or Ice from Motor Vehicles shall be inserted and shall read as outlined in the enclosed ordinance.
Make a motion, make a set.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Anyone on the motion? Uh, for the record, we are joined by Counselor Cregan. And, uh, Counselor Green, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. My only question is, um, with this ordinance, is it tying in at all to, um, our zero, seven, eight, twenty-four where it's outlined on what the fee will actually be and what group that fee will fall if there is a violation of removing the snow and ice from the motor vehicle?
Uh, that, I, I can't speak with certainty to that, but by my recollection, uh, zero, seventy-eight, twenty-four does not amend any of the same sections, and the amendments in zero, seventy-eight, twenty-four would only move the location of some of those fines and fees, but not actually change them for the, uh, snow and ice violations.
Um, is there, is there a fee associated with that for the violation of not removing snow and ice? Is that set, is that fee set?
I believe there is. Uh, Chief?
I believe it's set by ordinance. Um, uh, this, this petition was, uh, drafted, I believe, by Counselor Boescheman. Uh, I think it would require a separate petition to make a change to the fine amounts under 169, but I would defer that to, uh, council on, on that aspect. But, uh, I, everything is dictated under 169 in the scheduled fines. Um, and I think that would have to come separately, but, but I may be wrong.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, that, that, that's correct. It's all under 169, and that is not being changed. The only thing that's being changed by seventy-eight, twenty-four is the fee specifically for the parking violations.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Uh, anyone else on the motion? All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Bean Hasinger?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
And Counselor Boescheman?
Yes.
That's ten members. It unanimously passes.
Thank you very much. Uh, zero, seventy-seven, twenty-four is actually on the agenda by mistake. Uh, there was a bit of confusion over whether we had to adopt this as an ordinance or whether it was simply the adoption of a local option statute. It has been determined to be the latter, so we already took the only vote we need to take on it. Uh, so we will be skipping that unless someone has a motion to the contrary. Uh, zero, seventy-eight, twenty-four, I'm not going to read through this whole thing if, unless someone insists, but, uh, this is the ordinance is increasing, this is the first and second reading of the ordinance increasing the fine for, uh, parking during a snow parking ban.
Make a motion, make a set.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve, uh, to send this through its, uh, first and second readings. Um, is there anyone on the motion? Oh, Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I cannot remain in favor of this. I haven't been from the beginning. As I said before, I think it disproportionately affects, uh, low-income residents and families who have multifamily units that they live in and, and have to rely on street parking. And I, I believe it disproportionately affects low-income residents and families. May I yield the floor? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I'll, I'll just make the same note I did at the time, uh, which is that I would agree, but I think it disproportionately affects them to their benefit in that people living in the denser parts of our city are the ones that are most at risk of not being able to receive emergency services if the roads are narrowed by parking. Um, I certainly don't want to place an additional financial burden on our low-income residents, but I also want them to be able to get ambulances and fire trucks and so forth to them when they need it, even during a snowstorm. Um, and the areas that have the most multifamilies and, uh, you know, lower-income housing in the city are the older areas of the city with much narrower streets, so, um, you know, I, I think that's the countervailing point here. Uh, anyone else on the motion? All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
No.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Bean Hasinger?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
And Counselor Boescheman?
Yes.
Okay, that passes nine to one.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have one petition, uh, one new petition from Counselor Schultz on behalf of Orlando Jimenez? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Uh, of 507 Water Street to request removal of dying trees on Lancaster Street located above his home. That will be referred to Public Works. The last item on our agenda is the mandatory review of the open meeting law complaint that was submitted to the council by, uh, Ms. Wechi regarding our February 20th meeting. Uh, the substance of that complaint was that as we had two counselors participating remotely, we were obligated to conduct all votes by roll call. Uh, upon investigation, that is in fact true, uh, though I, certainly I will say for my part, there was no intentional violation. Um, and so tonight, the recommendation would be that we take a single vote to reaffirm all votes that were taken on the 20th uh, by unanimous consent and take it tonight by roll call uh, so that we essentially cure the violation in question. Uh, do I have a motion? Uh, Counselor Cruz, go ahead.
Just for careful, thank you, Mr. President, just for clarification. So we're allowed to take one final roll call vote to re-approve all the votes?
Yes, that is, that's the plan, unless some, unless anyone would like to, uh, attempt to vote them all individually again, um, which, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I don't think we need to get too far into this. Uh, I think this individual has wasted far too much of the residents and the city's time as it is and those who work hard in this city. I'm all for voting for this. I'll make a motion to, I'll, I'll make that motion to vote.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Uh, and again, this is to reaffirm the decisions listed on the agenda which were taken at our prior meeting by unanimous consent rather than by roll call. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Bean Hasinger?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
And Counselor Boescheman?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by ten unanimously.
That was a unanimous roll call vote, for the record. Uh, now, we need, there are two other things on that matter that we need to discuss very briefly. One is, I simply need a vote from the council to authorize me to send a response, uh, to the complainant, which will be substantially in the form presented in front of you, uh, in the handout.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and second. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Bean Hasinger?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
And Counselor Boescheman?
Yes.
That's ten members. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And the last item, uh, which is not an item we need to vote on, it's not on the agenda, but it's related to this, is in light of this, uh, I am going to have to strongly encourage counselors from this point forward to not participate remotely unless there is no other option. This, this isn't directed at you, Counselor Boescheman. This is just a general statement because there are a lot of counselors who, you know, have taken advantage of the flexibility, and that's great. But knowing now that if we do so, we will have to take every vote by roll call, it just adds too much time to the council. So I, I would strongly discourage any counselor from participating remotely unless there is some grave reason why, A, you can't be here, and B, you feel the absolute need to still participate rather than just missing the meeting.
Mr. President, Mr. President?
Go ahead, counselor.
Why don't you just tell my fellow counselors that you miss me?
Well, that's, that's also true. But you know, I ha, I have to give a civically relevant reason for asking people to do this.
All right.
Oh, uh, Counselor Green?
Um, moving forward then with those statements, then will we, um, as part of our, um, standard operating procedure, then when counselors participate remotely, then we will then just know then in turn every item voted on will be by roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Which, which is why I would ask that it only be done for extraordinary circumstances because we probably would have been out of here by 7:30 tonight otherwise.
Okay. Thank you.
So, uh, all right, and that concludes our business for the evening. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Little bit behind. We have a motion and second and another motion to adjourn. And I guess we need a roll call to adjourn.
Yep.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Kuchar?
Please.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Bean Hasinger?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Enthusiastically.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boescheman?
You won't believe it. The answer is no. Yes.
Ten members.
And, okay, so that's, uh, that's nine to one to adjourn. Uh, let the record show that I am deeming counselors Kuchar and Walsh to have voted in the affirmative. Have a good night, everyone.